Daniel Chatney, Toledo.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will begin with our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda are considered routine in nature. If anyone would like to remove an item?
Yes, I'd like to remove 21I.
21I. Anyone else like to remove an item? And anyone in the audience wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, then, seeing none, we'll bring this back to the board for motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move approval of remaining items, sorry. So we have a motion by Gustafson, and second by Jones. Roll call, please. Landon?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And next, then, we'll take item 21I. And Supervisor Jones, did you want to share?
Yes, yes. The reason I pulled it is because I would like to increase our donation from $750 to $1,000.
All right, thank you. Any questions? I'll open this item up to the public. Questions on that? All right, close public comment, and then, does this need to be a roll call?
No.
No, thank you. All right, so, may I have a?
I'll move approval.
Second?
Motion by Jones, second by Gustafson. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public comment. I'm the synopete for folks in the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Catherine Hill, Tahoe City Downtown Association. Thank you guys for being here in Tahoe today. I just wanted to share a few things we have coming up in Tahoe City. Our farmer's market continues through the fall every Thursday. October 10th and 11th, we have our Tahoe Literary Festival returning to Tahoe City. The Harvest Festival returns the 18th. New events this year. October 24th, we have the first Halloween Pub Crawl in Tahoe City. And then, the 25th Haunted Historic Walking Tours that we're bringing to town. Should be fun. And then, the 31st Downtown Trick or Treating at our local businesses, and the Watson Cabin Haunted House. So we hope you guys can join us. And then, on another issue, we wanted, I wanted to come here today on behalf of the Downtown Association to express our concern regarding Caltrans' recent decision to raise speed limits on Highway 89 along the west shore, particularly in areas where there are multiple pedestrian crossings. These crossings are used daily by our visitors and our residents, and they're, increasing the speed limit increases the rest of pedestrians. For years, we've been asking for stronger safety measures, and instead, Caltrans has increased the speed limits in those zones. So we asked that the Board of Supervisors look into that matter, and if possible, advocate for those speeds to be reduced back down. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that. And if you're looking for something fun to do, come to Tahoe and enjoy all the great things in Tahoe City. Appreciate that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
And what was it, I was just curious what it was, what it was, and what the speed is reduced to now?
35, and now it's 45 in west shore.
Yeah, some areas it went up to 40, especially around the sunny side area where there's four crossings in less than a half a mile, and then other areas it went up to 45. Starting at Grand Labakan, where the, right where there's a pedestrian crossing, they increase the speed limit. So it's active all day, all year. I mean, it's amazing the amount of traffic there, and to increase the speed limits is really even dangerous. And we've also been asking for signalized crossings, and only, the PUD has recently put in a couple at their bike crossings, but Caltrans has not added any to the pedestrian crossings.
Thank you. So for the, for the rest of the board, we've been very active in this and sent letters to District 3. Derek Gady, our Director of Public Works, is engaged with Caltrans as well and been told no, so happy to bring it forward for the full board to take an action, because maybe a united proclamation from the board would be better than just one letter from one county supervisor, so. We've been, we've been working on it, Cap, but I know.
I'm aware, but I wanted to bring that forward, and most of the people live along the west shore and drive there, have also been contacting Caltrans, so they're aware of the concern.
Yep.
But, I agree. More of us together. Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. Anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, and then, do we have one, an 8A accompanation?
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings this morning. Supervisor St. Louis Celeste, and grew from Valley Park Community Services District, and just an IT issue, the prior speaker, the podium kept cutting out, and somebody else had a hot mic, so that was kind of a disaster, and overall low volume. So just on the IT side for the rest of the day. But my basically quick comment this morning is I'm encouraging this board to promote no on Prop 50 to this doo- this boondoggle, and Sacramento's pulling off a $200 million special election to basically turn Placer County blue instead of red. Not appreciated in the slightest, and I think picking up five more Democratic seats is not good for this state. This state is already in too much trouble, and there's so much going on in the legislature. I think it'd be really great to have like a really easy fine point of where our supervisors stand on some of these main issues that are coming forth, especially in this special election. That's that. Then I have kind of from a personal perspective, but I have a contrast to, that I can make with it. And I've brought this up before to you about having a death in the family, having to go through the probate process, and informing the county, the death of owner, to bring to next of kin such as myself. And of course, the state form, the Board of Equalizations form, has to be filled out within 150 days, or there's fees and percentages attached to these that must be paid. So when I sent that in to the assessor's office, I'm now being asked where are my letters? Well, the hearing, or the hearings are at least six months out for probate, which there's this overlap timed. So I did it with Eldorado, and it went smoothly, and I'm going to be informed and given the assessor and the tax bill so that I can pay it. I have a squatter situation at the residence where that billing would go. I, so I'm stuck between a rock and a hard spot. Give me the letters of administration, or letters testamentary. I can't get those till after December. And well, you know, the tax rolls are already going, so I'm bringing this to the board's attention, that Eldorado can see their way through the fact that there's a timeline there, and that I am an interested party in the estate, regardless of who's squatting in the property, that that at least duplicate bill come to me. So with that, I'm going to yield and thank you for your attention to that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, if there are no other further public comments, we will close public comment and bring it to board member and county executive report. So, my colleagues, anyone? Supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you. I just wanted to report that I had the privilege to, for my first time, to attend RCRC, and obviously Supervisor Landon, our representative on that, does a great job. It was really informative to have it up here at Everline Resort and be able to attend some of the sessions. Especially appreciated getting to know the supervisors at San Luis Obispo County and Napa County, who have worked on the fire consolidation issues in their respective counties. I thought that was very informative in their Calfire contracts. And then, Lafco update. Our commission met and closed session and scheduled discussion on how to replace our executive officer who's moving on to the state. We did pick Plan West Consulting to, for up to six months, to be the interim executive officer of Lafco, so we can continue to process applications, annexations, any activities that need to be processed, and then simultaneously going out for recruitment for a new executive officer. So I wanted to make sure. And then, last night, a number of us got to see Fannie Bridge and the beams going in, and I just think that's a remarkable accomplishment for our community. After all these years, that project started in 2017 with the new bridge being built, and then they had to put a pause on the reconstruction because they ran out of funding, got the funding back together, coordinated with our public works team, and just an incredible effort to see it live and in person. So thank you.
What's the ETA of it actually being completed?
I know they were shooting for November, and I see nodding heads in the audience that sometime in November is, they hope to. And while we usually want a good winter storm, and around that time, maybe this year we want it mid-November. I don't know.
Great, thank you. Any other board reports?
I have just a couple of things. One, I wanted to let you know that when Prop 50 came before, now that it'll come before the voters, I serve on the CSAC, the California State Association of Counties Board, and our staff really lobbied hard to make sure that we got the funds for the election, because originally the governor was saying that counties had enough money to do a brand-new election unplanned for. So they were able to advocate and get probably between $200 and $250 million for this election coming up, and I think for us, it might cost us about $2 million, $2.5 million in Placer County. So I'm grateful that we have people advocating to try to make sure counties remain whole, because these unexpected expenses, it's not a drop in the bucket. And then, I wanted to share that we had two members of our community pass away in the last couple of weeks, who served the city of Roseville and our, and then our greater area. Harry Crabbe was the mayor of Roseville for 18 years. He became mayor of Roseville in 1980 after serving on many committees and on the Planning Commission, and he was just a force to be reckoned with. He loved the city of Roseville, and I remember when I ran for the city, city council, he grilled me to make sure that I appreciated the city as much as he did. So he passed away, and he actually served 18 years, and then four terms as mayor. And then, another gentleman who passed away is Senator Rico Aller, and Rico was a state assembly member and senator, representing the Gold Country area and Placer County up north. And I had the pleasure of working for him as a district representative for a couple of years. He served in the assembly for four years, from 1996 to 2000, and then the state senate until 2004. So I just wanted to recognize those gentlemen who did what we all want to do, which is serve our community, and they did that well. And so, at the end of the meeting, I'd like to just adjourn in their memory today.
Thank you. So with that, we are going to move to, we have some department items. We've got a couple of department items, since our first timed item is at 9:45. So we've got item 5A, which is a Health and Human Services item, the California Department of Public Health funding for the Women, Infant, and Children Program. And do we have somebody online? He's on Zoom. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Gore, board members. I'm Mike Romero, Deputy Director of Health and Human Services for the Public Health Division. The item I am presenting today is about the Women, Infants, and Children Program, also known as WIC. I'll be referring to it as WIC. The action requested is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services, or designee, to sign a revenue agreement with the California Department of Public Health for the operation of the Women, Infants, and Children Program from October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2028, for an amount not to exceed $4,519,226 with risk management and county council concurrence, and sign related amendments up to $100,000 in documentation related to this funding, consistent with the subject matter and scope of work, with risk management and county council concurrence. So WIC is not new. In fact, WIC has celebrated, it's celebrated its 50th anniversary just last year. WIC provides participants with access to scientifically selected nutrient-rich foods, information on healthy eating, and referrals to healthcare and community programs. WIC serves about 3,410 income-eligible participants per month, including pregnant women, new mothers, infants, and young children up to age five. Research has shown that every dollar spent on a pregnant woman in WIC saves up to $2.48 in healthcare costs for mother and newborn. Participation in WIC improves nutrition, resulting in overall healthier pregnancies, healthier birth outcomes, and better growth and development of young children. Additionally, each year, women and children in WIC have access to over $3 million worth of healthy foods from local grocers with program-issued WIC cards. Nutrition and health education are also provided to WIC participants, along with support and information about breastfeeding, help in finding healthcare and community services, including referrals to Medi-Cal and CalFresh. WIC also participates in a farmer's market program that enables WIC participants to purchase locally grown produce. So Public Health is fortunate to have a very strong WIC program with experienced and dedicated leadership and staff, providing WIC services out of Rockland, Auburn, and Kings Beach. And since you're in Kings Beach this morning, I would like to recognize Celeste Lopez from the Human Services Division, who provides our WIC services for public health and for eastern Placer residents. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that. Any questions for my colleagues? I don't see any. We will open this up for a public comment. Any comments from the public? And nobody online, again? All right, great. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for any action.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Jones, second by Landon. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And next, we have item 6A, which is a MOU and funding agreement with Tahoe North Truckee Transportation Management Association. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, Nick Martin, with your county executive office here in Tahoe. No lengthy presentation this morning for these items. These are just two agreements that are being requested from your board for the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. The first one being an MOU for winter park-and-ride services, and then the second one being a funding agreement for the North Lake Tahoe Express. The, if you remember back to your June board meeting, we brought two, or at that time, three agreements to your board with TNT TMA. One of those was the North Lake Tahoe Express. This is coming back to your board now. There was a change in the structure of that agreement. It was previously a five-party agreement. They have now brought on a new funding partner with the Reno Tahoe Airport. And so, at that, the, the partners and TMA decided to seek individual agreements with each entity under the same structure and funding allotments as before. It's just now this is coming to your board as a agreement, two-party between TNT TMA and the county. For the winter park-and-ride agreement, that was scheduled to go to your board in June. It was pulled late in the process due to some discussions around the payment structure for TMA to be able to process and move forward with their services with a large increase in the funding needed for that. They needed a different structure to be able to recoup some costs sooner as they were incurring them, and so it took us some time to bring that back. Part of that was because they had a successful application to the TOTT bid dollars-at-work emergent grant cycle. So there's an additional influx of $431,000 that is, was recommended by the TOT committee for that, for the winter park-and-ride services, which is bringing some enhanced service to both Sugar Bowl and Palisades Tahoe. So the actions requested of your board, number one is to authorize the CEO or designee to execute a memorandum of understanding between the county of Placer and Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association for administration and promotion of winter park-and-ride services in eastern Placer County for fiscal year '25-'26, in the amount of up to $522,495 for a contract term of December 3rd, 2025 through April 15th, 2026, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. And the second item is to authorize the county executive officer or designee to execute a funding agreement between the county of Placer and the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association for the operation of the North Lake Tahoe Express in eastern Placer County for fiscal year '25-'26, in the amount of up to $152,612 for a contract term of July 1st, 2025 through July, June 30th, 2026, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. And with that, available for any questions, and I believe the executive director of TNT TMA, Sarah Van Sichlin, is also available online if needed.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that, Nick. Any questions? Supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you. Real quick, on the park-and-ride, is that solely funded through TOT from Placer County, or are there part, other financing partners in that one? I wasn't clear on that. Maybe I didn't read.
Sorry, no, good question. So the difference in the agreement this year, the MOU structure, is Placer County is still funding winter park-and-ride at a similar level as we have in the past, which is, if you look through Exhibit B at the very end of that agreement, is, the funding amount is $90,000. That's being requested from Placer County TOT funding. The TOTT bid, T-Bid Dollars-at-Work program is funding an enhanced service, expanded shuttle service, and that total amount is $431,000. Sorry, $431,733.
Okay.
So it's a mix this year, different than how it's been done in the past, due to the success of the winter park-and-ride program over the previous few seasons.
Great, thank you. Thanks. I had missed Exhibit B, so that broke it out for me. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or action.
I will make a motion to approve six. Can I do this on one motion? Read into the record already, by?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No.
I was going to move approval of items 6A, 1, and 2. And I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Great, thank you. Okay, that actually concludes our department items. We thought it was going to be a very full morning, and it was not as full. So our next item is timed for 9:45. It is 9:23, which means we're going to take a break until 9:45. And can I ask, if you're able to, to actually put up on the screen that we're going to re-adjourn at 9:45? If you're able to do that, my, my friendly IT friends, that would be terrific. And then you can turn the music back on, and y'all can talk to us while we wait until 9:45. Thank you.
Turn off all your mics. And turn off all your mics.
Yeah, turn off your mics.
Thank you.
All right, Megan, are we ready to go? All right, welcome back. Thank you for your patience. We are going to now take our 9:45 timed item, which is a proclamation for Gold Star Families Remembrance Day. And I've got the proclamation here and I will go ahead and read it. So whereas America's Gold Star families are the immediate family members of United States Armed Forces, Armed Forces service members who have died in the line of duty, a designation formally recognized by Congress in 1947 through the authorization of the Gold Star lapel button, signifying the nation's commitment to remember and honor the sacrifice of their loved ones. And whereas the Gold Star tradition originated during World War I, when families displayed service flags with blue stars representing active duty service members and gold stars representing those who had died in service, a practice that endures today as a symbol of sacrifice and national gratitude. And whereas Gold Star families embody resilience, courage, and enduring patriotism as they honor the memory of their fallen loved ones, while continuing to serve their communities and country. And whereas organizations such as Gold Star Mothers Incorporated, Gold Star Wives of America, and Gold Star Family Support Networks, support networks provide critical peer support, remembrance activities, and advocacy for families of the fallen, ensuring that these sacrifices are never forgotten. And whereas the strength of our military is our service members, the strength of our service members is our families, Placer County recognizes that no one has given more for the nation than the families of the fallen. And whereas caring for our veterans is essential to preserving the soul of our nation, Placer County stands ready to serve our veterans and their families, ensuring they are supported, remembered, and honored, not just on this day, but every day. Whereas the Placer County Board of Supervisors encourages all residents to honor and support the families of our fallen service members, participate in observances recognizing their sacrifice and service, and reflect upon the freedoms we hold because of the sacrifices made by these courageous individuals and their families. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a meeting on today, September 23rd proclaiming September 28th, 2025 as Gold Star Families Remembrance Day in Placer County. And joining us this morning is Steve Johnson, who oversees our Veteran Services Office. And Steve, I'd like to have you make a couple of comments if you would.
Great, thank you Board of Supervisors, Chair Gore, County Leadership. I appreciate the opportunity, as always, to get up here and talk about our veteran community in any way possible. And I do also want to say thanks to the board for all the proclamations over the last year that have been veteran-centric. I don't think that's lost on our community, so thank you. As mentioned, I am Steve Johnson. I'm the Placer County Veteran Service Officer. I'm also a retired Air Force veteran. And this, this issue of Gold Star families is specifically near and dear to me, not only as a retired veteran, but unfortunately, you know, during years of service, I have lost fellow airmen in the line of duty, but also loved ones in my family that made the ultimate sacrifice. And so they're not Placer County veterans, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but my Uncle Jeff passed away when I was really little. He was serving in the US Army in Germany. And that was something that, you know, I remember as a core memory for me as a little kid. He was 20 years old. And in 2005, my cousin Matt was killed in action on September 16th in Iraq, so just 20 years ago this past week. Matt was conducting a mission in Iraq, oh asset, and he's also a soldier in the Army. So these sacrifices will never be forgotten by our family, just like many of our families in our community that have endured these heartbreaking moments. Many of us have these connections to Gold Star families, whether our families, our friends, or even our neighbors. We've all become familiar with Sergeant Nicole G., who was killed in action during the Abu Gate attack in the 2021 withdrawal from Afghanistan. And of course, our community has made a great effort not to ever forget Sergeant G., which we appreciate. But today, I'd like to share some comments from a Gold Star mom in our county. She was going to be here with me today, but unfortunately, she's in our nation's capital today. She lives right down the street from me, actually, in Lincoln, so that's kind of neat. But she, she gave me a brief statement to read, so I'm going to do that. Her name is Karen Meredith. She lives in Lincoln, California, and she's a Gold Star mother. US Army First Lieutenant Ken Ballard was a tank commander and been, had been in Iraq for 384 days when he was killed on Memorial Day of 2004. Ken was a fourth-generation Army officer and my only child. He was awarded three Bronze Stars, the Presidential Unit Citation, and of course, a Purple Heart for his service in Iraq. He loved serving his country. Speaking on behalf of Karen, I am the President of American Gold Star Mothers Department of Northern California, and have been an advocate for Gold Star and military families for 21 years. The award commemorates the tragic death of a military member who has perished while in the line of duty, and hopes to provide a level of comfort to the parents and families that are left behind. Since World War I, a Gold Star family has signified a family that has lost one of its members in combat. The Gold Star next of kin, pin signifies a family that has lost one of its members while serving on active duty. The family can display a Gold Star service flag for any military family members who have died from an honorable cause. Each Gold Star on the flag signifies a death. Though today, only around 1% of the country is involved in military service, as compared to the pretty staggering 12% during other times of war like World War II, there are still a significant number of surviving Gold Star families, not to mention, a Gold Star lives on in a family's legacy. So I personally want to thank Karen for providing her comments and for the service that she continues to provide to our Gold Star families in Northern California. We will continue to honor Ken and all who have perished while serving their nation. Finally, I would just like to mention that if there are any Gold Star families or any veterans at all who need assistance with military or veteran benefits, please contact our Placer County Veteran Service Office. We stand ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate that. And please tell Karen how much we appreciate her sharing with us her comments, and she certainly paid the ultimate sacrifice of losing her son for our country, so very much appreciated. I wanted to give any members, any of my colleagues, an opportunity to say something before we open this up to the public.
I'd like to say, Steve, thank you so much for everything that you do in, in your offices, Veteran Support Services. I, I know it's very greatly appreciated by everyone, and thanks for bringing this forward to us today. Those families do pay the ultimate price when they lose their, their children or spouses, anything like that. So we wholly support this and thank you so much.
Supervisor Landon.
Thanks. I'll just echo what Supervisor Jones said and just want to reiterate how fortunate and blessed we are to have you as our VSO. I think you just really go above and beyond for the veterans community, and I, I have heard from many veterans in the community just how awesome you are. And so, thank you for that. And then also thank you for recognizing such an important cause and how, how neat it is that we have the president of Gold Star, is it Gold Star Moms?
It is Gold Star Mothers of Northern California. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, right here in our little area. So please extend our thanks to her and just really appreciate the work that you do.
Supervisor Dematte.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for being here. And just thank you too for the commitment that all the veterans pay to us. And it's a pleasure for me to have the honor to work with you guys. So, thank you.
Supervisor Gustafson.
Thank you, Steve, and it truly is an honor to have you. And I think the word to so many of those out there, Placer County does honor our veterans and those that we've lost. We all truly appreciate. And the services and the number of claims and assistance that we've watched your numbers skyrocket. And so just a plea to any veterans out there, or anyone who knows a veteran who's in need, please get them to your office, because you're doing incredible things on behalf of our veterans, so thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody in the public wish to make a comment on this item? All right, we're seeing none, we'll close public comment and ask the board to move approval of the proclamation.
I will proudly, as a veteran spouse, move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
And second by Supervisor Dematte. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Super, um, you know, I see our photographer over there, and I don't have the full proclamation. Oh, you have it there. So let's come down and take a photo and, and ask the entire board to join me. I think that would be appropriate. I get so choked up to think she lost her.
Can we, can we promote their?
It's happened to so many people though.
Veterans.
Okay. Three, two, one. We'll do a few. Three, two, one more.
Thank you so much. I have to show you a quick one on an honor flight for you people. Did you see certainly the? Yes, I'll tell them about it. I, yes. Before we move on, can I say something about veterans' service?
Yeah. All right, Supervisor Jones wanted to make a comment, so please, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. What I wanted to mention was, it's related to veterans. The week before last, my husband went on what they call an honor flight, and he escorted a veteran from the Bay Area. And it was, it was just so amazing. He was just so thrilled when he got back. And what they do is they, they fly out early on a Thursday morning, they go straight to DC, and he meets up with his sponsor E., and they take this plane load of veterans, they go to DC, and they go to every memorial, every memorial there. And they also have a women's veterans memorial there as well. So they're touring all day Thursday, all day Friday, and then, and then part, part of Saturday before they pick them all up, but they have wheelchairs for all of the guys that they're, that they're hosting and sponsoring, so they, because they do a lot of walking, even if they don't normally use a wheelchair. But he said it was just so amazing and the, the pride and everything it brings up in everyone, you know, the service. They're mostly Vietnam veterans right now, so they spend a lot of time at the wall. But really, a proud day, and he really enjoyed it, had a good time.
Well, thank you for sharing that. I think it's a great opportunity for veterans to serve older veterans, and I know that we support that in our office, so appreciate you sharing that. I've been trying to get my husband actually to sign up to do that. So I'll have him talk to Cliff.
I have one more comment.
Yeah, Supervisor Dematte.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention, which I forgot to mention earlier, is that the American Legion Post 775 is having a comedy night on September 27th from 6:00 to 10:00 on Horseshoe Bar Road, which is next week. Tickets, I believe, are still on sale. It's not sold out. These three great comedians will be there. It'll be a great night to help them raise money as well, so I just wanted to put a shout out for that. So I will also have that posted, so if anybody wants to see it online, we'll have that up on our website, so.
Great, thank you for sharing.
Thank you again. You're welcome.
The 20, September 27th, Friday evening, a great way to spend a Friday evening, some laughs and supporting veterans. All right, so we have two minutes, so we're going to wait two minutes before our next timed item, which is at 10:00 AM. So don't go very far. We'll just stay here until 10 o'clock comes around.
Hey Macon though, I don't know if I love that because then they have to stick around for All right, it looks like it is 10:02 so we are back and we are going to take our 10:00 AM timed item which is our Treasurer-Tax Collector who's going to present to us Tristan Butcher and it is a formation of a joint powers authority with the Tahoe City Public Utility District. Good morning Tristan.
Good morning Chair, Honorable Board. Tristan Butcher, Placer County Treasurer-Tax Collector. Today's item I have for your consideration is a formation of a joint powers authority with the Tahoe City Public Utility District. There are two actions requested. Adopt a resolution authorizing the county executive officer on behalf of the county to enter into the joint exercise powers agreement relating to the Tahoe City Public Utilities District Public Financing Authority and execute all documents necessary to give effect to that purpose subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Second item is determine that the proposed actions are each not a project pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guideline Section 15378. The county was approached a few months ago from the District Tahoe City Public Utility District. They are interested in seeking financing for some public infrastructure upgrades that are needed throughout their district and so they were looking for an opportunity to form an authority to be able to go out to market and to get financing to be able to complete those improvements. So they reached out to the county. We reviewed it internally, staff reviewed it along with county council, CEO's office to meet that demand and we were able to do so and so this item is before you. This is a joint powers authority so the county has no obligations related to it directly. The obligations fall on the authority once it's formed so any debt that's incurred will fall back on that district. The actual utility district itself, none of those obligations transfer over to the county and the entire JPA will be managed by the utility district. There is no direct fiscal impact to the county associated with the formation of the JPA. All financing costs and repayment obligations will rest with the district. My office will still monitor to make sure that the disclosure requirements are met and make sure for any possible bond issuances just to ensure that a JPA that's associated with the county is fulfilling their requirements. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Any questions? And I'm just going to clarify, so even though it's a JPA where you typically have two parties participating in actions together on behalf of the two entities of mutual concern, this is just a way for the PUD to bond for needed infrastructure.
Exactly.
Okay, and then we are not as a county liable for anything and that's written in whatever documents are made available as we move forward with the JPA it'll be written in that we're not liable?
No, it's included in the MOU. The JPA is a new public entity that accepts that responsibility. Whatever the district pledges for collateral could be subject to anything that would fall back but the county itself would not be responsible for anything. This is similar to what we have done in the past with for example PCPFA, Placer County Public Financing Authority. That was the Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Agency formed a JPA for the benefit of the empower program and then also for completing lease revenue financings for buildings.
Great, thank you very much. Let's open this up to the public. Any comments from members of the public?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Gore and Board of Supervisors. I'm Kim Boyd, I'm with the Tahoe City Public Utility District and I'm just here on behalf of the district to say thank you for your consideration of this item. It is an important tool in our financing strategy for long-term water infrastructure improvement projects in particular so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else in the public? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Jones, second by Gustafson. All those, that's a roll call please. DeMetee?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Gore?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. And so it is now 10:07. We have a 10:15 timed item which we will take at 10:15 so we'll take a brief break, be back at 10:15. Thank you. All right, it is 10:15 AM so we will come back for our 10:15 timed item which is item 3A. It's the Board Assumption of Appeal Authority for Homewood Lots 12 and 13 and Chris Bohulie with our Planning Manager is here to present. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Gore. Board members, Chris Bohulie, Placer County Planning Director. Over the weekend, staff received notice from the appellant, Keep Homewood Public withdrawing their appeal of the Homewood Lots 12 and 13 Planning Director's interpretation which is the subject of this item. Therefore, staff is requesting that this item be dropped from today's agenda. That concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you. I'm going to have council explain our process.
Thank you Chair. Under our county code specifically section 17.60.110, once an appeal has been filed, the appeal cannot be withdrawn except with consent of the Board of Supervisors. So for that reason, what I suggest that we do is that we take public comment on the question only of whether the appeal can be withdrawn and then have a vote by the board whether to consent to withdraw the appeal and removal of the item from the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. So I will open this item to the public. If anybody wants to comment on the board withdrawing the appeal. All right, and seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board for any conversation or action. No conversation?
I don't believe I need any conversation, happy to move approval.
And I'm happy to second.
All right, so we're moving approval to withdraw the...
I can take care of that.
Yes, please give us the word.
To withdraw the appeal and remove the item from the agenda.
All right, that's what we're moving. So a motion by Gustafson, second by Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, well thank you very much. Appreciate that Chris. And then with that, our next timed item is at 11:00 AM so we anticipated a very full morning but not a full morning. So we do need to come back at 11:00 AM because it's a timed item. So we will break until 11:00 AM and I'll ask staff to put up the board is adjourned until 11:00 AM, that would be great and we'll take a break, a 45 minute break with maybe some music. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.